Lisa.
I want to ask a question about the issue of tech support for the curriculum and for the, you know, the tech that's being added to the program. Am I understanding correctly that this is a position that's in the budget but has not yet been filled?
Yes.
So this would not be a new add to
Correct.
Next year's budget? Assuming that we maintained that position and did not eliminate it?
Correct.
Okay. Did you talk at all about why that position hasn't been filled? We didn't discuss that.
I don't think at that meeting it was discussed, but they have gone as a civil service position. They went through the list and nobody qualified on that list for what Steve is looking for. So we're looking to go back to different options in the fire. What we did this year with some of the monies that weren't used for that purpose is redeveloping the website, you know, and a lot of other things that we automated things that were done by hand before.
We purchased some consultant services that that person likely would have done had we've been able to find a qualified person to fill that position. So we still need to, we need to firm that up going forward. It's still.
And is that exactly what we need? Because what we had put in there was called an infrastructure manager. And that need may have changed to more of a, I don't know, we'll have to talk to Steve because I think he sees a couple needs. First, there's the whole technology and then repair. There's also integrating into the classroom. So it's kind of want to get to both things, but.
Do you anticipate this will be something that we'll be talking about further in the budget development process?
Yes, oh yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Diane.
Tom, Joe, you might answer to this. In either versions of the technology plan, does it account for replacing these old printers or the money that any, there is money or?
Yeah. It's one of the things that we built into the plan was to overhaul at least 20% of the printers each year, so.
So that was, that would be included?
So there's definitely money in there. And also, Mr. Jensen's been very good about finding, getting surplus printers. He's been very good at that. Actually, I think we picked up like 20 more or somewhere around there, 15 or so of, they're a couple years old, but they're good. That's what I use in my office. They're great little machines.
Perfect.
As long as they're compatible.
You know, they're not, you know, they're not the big, you know, type of network printers, but they're good to start replacing some of the singletons in classrooms and that.
That's good.
Yeah, that's been helpful. But there is, he's put together in that plan is replacements for smart boards going to the interactive projectors and that. So there is money in there to start that process of starting overhaul because printers and smart boards are starting to.
Tom, you know if that's in both plans or just the?
They're in both plans, yeah. Because we knew that that has to happen no matter what. Depending on what happens with what type of devices the middle school and the high school want, we knew that no matter what, printers and smart boards needed to be replaced. So that's in both plans.
It's also worth mentioning that about $270,000 worth of Smart Schools Bond money is still unaccounted for. I mean, we don't know when we're going to get it, how we're going to get it, whether we have to spend it and get reimbursed the following year. So, you know, when you look at the contours of the budget and revenues versus expenditures, that's a potential revenue there. Of course, it doesn't help us if we're not going to get it until next year. So, you know, we're, that's one of the other moving parts in this whole thing.
All right. Anything else for curriculum?
Okay. So the next committee is finance. We pretty heavily discussed that already in the budget development, but I did the minutes, so I'll just mention, you know, we went over the numbers, but considering the excess cost aid that we are likely to get, we still have a budget gap of $400,000 approximately. And so, you know, we did discuss that. It's time to think about cuts and to make the, you know, administrators aware that we need to come up with lists of things that could be cut. So hopefully, by the time the, we have the budget workshop, hopefully we'll have more information about, you know, potential cuts and be able to review those items and make some decisions. Any other questions for finance or? Okay. So next is policy. So the policy committee, we reviewed several policies. One is the homework policy that we had a discussion about our last board meeting. So I guess the discussion was that we want to try to leave the decision-making about homework to, you know, teachers and their professional judgment. So Joe is going to be crafting some revisions to the policy and bring that forth for a first reading. So there are several other policies that we reviewed and I guess there's a few that we're going to be looking at for revisions. Some are going to be left as is. I think the major one is the one on IEP diplomas, which we're going to have Richard's review because there's been changes to the law as far as IEP diplomas go. And we'll either make changes or perhaps eliminate that policy depending on, you know, Richard's review. Is there any questions?
Yeah, that's more report. You don't have a set of minutes there, but, you know, happy to report that we relaunched the Rhinebeck Collaboration Initiative with, I thought, pretty, pretty good cooperation from, from both the Village of Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck represented there. It was kind of as much a get acquainted meeting than it was an actual agenda of things to churn through. But we did spend the better part of an hour or so throwing out ideas and, you know, we talked about, you know, things like energy audits. We talked about solar a little bit, you know, as being things that either, you know, one or more municipalities had either done or talked about. We talked about technology. I'm just throwing off some things. We did talk about use of, shared use of facilities, which we do some of with the, with the town. We talked about, you know, some planning that's, that its hope occurs at the Thompson-Mazarella Park that might benefit the school district in terms of resources for first-class athletic teams. We talked about the issue of sharing tax cert costs that Deidre and I spoke with them about a few years ago, came up again. And again, we said we'd certainly be willing to look at anything. We needed some data to consider, so that, that came up again. Talked a little bit about the development of the Ryan Cliff Waterfront and how that might benefit our crew team at some point. So, I mean, you get the, you get the flavor of the kinds of ideas. We were just, really just spitballing it, but there were a number of things that came up that I think with, with additional discussion might, you know, might bear some fruit. So we all walked away from that meeting, I think, feeling like it was an hour well-spent. And I think somebody suggested that maybe we plan on meeting, you know, once a quarter and to see how things are going. So I'm, I'm encouraged that we started that dialogue, that it was well-received, that everybody contributed, and that we'll be meeting again, you know, within the next several months. So I thank Mark for being there as well. It was good conversation.
Laura.
Can you explain the tax cert conversation?
Yeah, the, yes, yes, I guess I can. The, as you know, you've, you act as a Board of Education. Every once in a while, Tom gives us the, the good news or the not-so-good news that a tax ashore has been settled and we need to sometimes refund taxes for a year or refund, I mean, X amount of taxes on a particular parcel for the year just passed or sometimes for the last three years, you know, whatever the settlement happens to be. And it was pointed out to us again, as it was several years ago, when Deidre and I had the conversation with, with our town supervisor, that the, the town is providing the, the legal support to, to challenge these tax ashores in court. And quite frankly, they would like the school district to share in that cost. I mean, everybody's looking for somebody else to share their costs. So I, you know, I get that. Of course, the, the person who places an assessed value on a parcel is in fact a town employee, not a school district employee. School districts by law aren't in the assessing business. We're just in the, you know, as far as, yeah, as, yeah, levying tax. Right, right. So, so there's an interest on their part in having us share the legal costs. And again, before, I think reasonable people can even have a conversation about that, you have to know what's, what's the cost benefit here? How much is, is being asked to be shared and what's that look like based on how the tax certs are concluded? So again, there's more information that needs to be on the table before we can even have a serious discussion, much less make any kind of decision. Some school districts share in that expense. The vast majority don't, as, as far as I understand it. So, open topic as far as we're concerned. But it did come up and I wanted to report that out to you. And when we get a better idea of what the costs are, then we can have a serious discussion. Right now, we'd be talking in a vacuum, so.
Thank you.
Deidre.
So I just want to thank you, Joe, for getting that going again. I mean, that this collaboration dates back to Supervisor Steve Block many years ago. And it did run effectively for a while. And even at that time, Joe, you were the organizer, the primary organizer of communicating to the other members of the group to get together and hosting people here or generously taking time out of your day to go meet elsewhere in the village. So, you know, but the people in those positions have shifted a lot. So I appreciate you getting that going again. I think it is really important and has a lot of potential all the time. So thanks for that and thanks to Mark for representing us.
Laura.
School start time, ad hoc committee.
So I'll report on that. We met with the principals of Chancellor and Buckley Middle School. So now we've met with all the principals. We've met with the athletic director. We've met with Tom Burnell and we hope to meet with Tom Burnell again to kind of come full circle back to bring, I think, ultimately sort of our sense of where we're at with all of the study we've undertaken in at least three or four meetings. So what emerges from these conversations? Brett King tells us that there is not a great deal of interest in just flipping the schedule and having the elementary school children start early. I don't think that probably surprises many of us. He is, he is aware of the challenges that might attend the idea of a single bus run where you'd have children, grades K through 12, all in the same bus. But actually, both he and John Chemnitzer, speaking from their kind of vantage point, is seeing the kinds of issues that come up on buses in our district, say that we have remarkably few behavioral problems on our buses. They seemed actually quite optimistic about the potential good impact of having all ages ride together, that actually those younger students might cause the older students to take on a sort of role model, you know, behavior. At least that would be the hope. So there was a lot of openness to exploring what that might look like. Of course, the real question is how much would this cost? That's why we will be coming back to you, Tom, to talk about that. Are there cost savings to be had by having a single bus run, even if you have to add in buses? We talked very particularly about how much room there is for the buses in front of the buildings and what would the turnaround time be between going between buildings. So we really have been trying to go into those issues while holding in our minds the big question, which is health and wellness, you know? What are the benefits? Thank you, Dr. Goldman, for remaining here throughout our meeting because really in a way you are articulating for us and helping us to bear in mind what are the significant health benefits, psychological in terms of learning and really how do our students experience at the middle and high school level the challenge of having to be up while it's still dark and in a school building and, and learning? So we, in fact, have heard from the people with whom we've met that they too are interested in always keeping that in mind. While they introduce the kind of challenges of scheduling and so forth, they are also very aware that there's a substantial body of literature that supports the idea of looking at this seriously. I think probably for the middle school, one of the biggest challenges, although it touched also on the experience of students in the mornings in Chancellor, is how do we deal with electives? How do we deal with the enrichment opportunities that take place now before school starts at Chancellor? How do we deal with after-school clubs and sports practices? So this is kind of familiar ground. We'd already gone over it, but we talked about it again. We talked about the kinds of issues that they see in the middle school with kids, especially in the sixth grade transitioning in, and how, how do students negotiate that? The reality is students today are very busy. That's really kind of what the principal ended up telling us and that no matter how much we try to kind of have a, an easy start into sixth grade with waking up early, students do often feel overwhelmed. And I think this again speaks to Dr. Goldman's very helpful presentation earlier, so. We did get into a conversation about the problem of tardiness. This emerges to actually be a rather substantial issue in our schools. John Chemnitzer spoke with us, as has Ed Davenport, about, you know, what might be some of the underlying issues that this data points to. Whether or not looking at changing school start time would have an impact on that, we don't know. But it did definitely seem to be the case that there is a trend towards people arriving late for school. So we kind of put that out on the table and we can look at the numbers if we want to. We also recognize that all of us are very entrenched in our own schedules and we are, in all of our families, there are complicated negotiations around time and work and school and convenience is, you know, not to be sniffed at. There's definitely a kind of a big issue for all of us in thinking about changing school start time and that we have to recognize and expect that people will be coming from that place when we talk about how does this impact a very complicated ecosystem of time? So I was glad that we were actually kind of being realistic about that. So where are we right now, this group, in terms of studying the issues? We really need to come back and find out what it would cost. It, it does sort of seem that we're not talking about a scenario of wanting to necessarily have two bus runs, but we want to run the numbers on the different possibilities. So we hope to have our next meeting again with you, Tom. How, how would we know if some of these issues are being positively impacted by the change? And finally, you know, the really big question, the elephant in the room, is how much later makes a difference? So one thing we've heard from many people is we can imagine an eight o'clock start time, right? We can imagine good things coming out of an eight o'clock start time, all kinds of unintended positive consequences. Is that enough change to represent a kind of benefit in terms of sleep deficit, such as the kinds of things that we were talking about earlier today? Or does it need to be a more radical change? If we're talking about a more radical change, the challenges, the obstacles just become that much more difficult for us to talk about. So I think our group remains sort of questing in terms of our hope that somehow someone will tell us that an eight o'clock start time would actually be fantastic because it would make our lives so much easier, all of us. But we, we need to kind of arrive at some sense of what is best for the students because at the end of the day, this whole change really needs to be for the students' benefit. So that's where we're at.
Lisa.
What's the sense of the committee about how to make that determination as to what the, what time change should be recommended, if any? Colleagues, you want to help me out here?
We're still casting a bath.
The list is a little all over the place. There are some that say eight-thirty is that magic hour. Others say 40 minutes. I mean, others say any amount of change is, is good. We don't have the answer yet. We're still trying to figure that out. It's a little unclear.
I think there's a sense that, that any decision on the specific time will probably be tied into the logistics of making transportation happen, the, the cost or savings of the time. I mean, I don't, these things aren't going to happen in isolation. I think they're all going to be tied in. That's what we're trying to pull these threads together to come up with, with something that might make some sense in terms of social, emotional health, finances, program, scheduling, after-school activities. I mean, if anybody thinks this is not a complex topic, think again. And so I think there may be compromises in all of those areas to try to get something done if it seems like it's not, and I hate to say it, but it's not a budget buster because we had discussions already about budgetary constraints without even considering this. So we're trying to fold all this stuff in.
Well, I, I, I grant your point, but if the other considerations militated in favor of just for example, an eight o'clock start time, but you couldn't justify that in terms of the benefits to the students, then why would we even start down that road?
Right, right. Those are the circular questions we have.
Diane.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're kind of starting to almost like put those things together, kind of pros and cons.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're hoping maybe the financial piece will kind of help us a little bit to either eliminate some things or point us in a direction. But it was interesting with the clubs, you know, that like in middle school, those clubs are very important to kids and they have definitely a benefit to them. But a lot of kids depend on that transportation. So if you were to go to one run, there would not be that transportation. So that would, we'd have to add that. So that would be something, you know, that's a question, is it more beneficial to have these kids in clubs or to change the start time if you couldn't do both? So.
Because you're talking about the late bus that comes from Chancellor will no longer be a late bus.
Right, right. And then in Chancellor, they take the high school bus in the morning to do the enrichment.
Right.
Not everybody's driven, so, you know.
Well, you know, I just want to say, thanks to, this is very thorough. I mean, I had not even thought about really the traffic congestion issue that, you know, already there's traffic congestion issues, so everyone's, you know, coming at the same time. But just for clarification, I mean, right, we couldn't really start both, you know.
There'd be a slight, yeah, fifteen, right.
Because for us, we're talking about that, it's different.
Yeah, be a staggered.
And I think it's also interesting that you're talking about, and it's worth exploring more in your committee, I just appreciate that you're talking about sort of the cultural issues involved in tardiness and traffic because any change that will be made might require a sort of cultural shift about, you know, I'm shocked, is this number correct? Is this minutes or is this that we see 2,000 tardy arrivals per year in all the schools?
Excused, we should point out.
But excused by parents and, and believe me, I've been that parent, but the.
Deidre.
But, you know, you know, that is interesting. If we move the start time, would we see that go away? We'd certainly hope so.
We would hope so.
But I would hope so. I think a cultural shift is important and speaks to whatever change we made. Also, the communication with parents and students, as if we were to make any kind of change moving forward, it's going to be really important to get people on board to like shift this whole ecosystem, as you say.
And we did spend some time on that tardies as far as if it would make a difference. And there's, there's no way to know if changing the start time would make that difference. We don't exactly know why people are tardy and if it would make it worse or better. So, you know, we'd hope it would make it better, but just when you look at those numbers, it's really kind of shocking. There's, it's a lot of unknowns going forward with this.
Please. Can I just follow up on that for a moment? The tardinesses that you looked at, were they, did they predominate in one building or another? Or was it just across the board?
Yeah. I mean, it's bad in all buildings.
It seems to be bad in all buildings.
But the numbers we had, the numbers we had for middle school and high school, they were for Chancellor.
Yeah.
And so the Chancellor numbers add on to that 2,000 number. Oh, okay.
Right.
I see.
We were really only studying the effect on the schools that have the early time, start time now.
So maybe we could give that out to everybody on the board.
It'd be great to look at it.
Yeah.
But you think about it, 2,000 tardies out of 700 kids, I mean, that's only three tardies per kid.
But it's not every kid that's coming.
I know, I know. It's going to be one, one child is going to be 50 tardies and that'll be a lot of students.
Very concentrated.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just all marked up.
I will only say at the risk of appearing to be a pessimist that the, the, well, I have to just have to say it. I just have to say it that I didn't get a, get a warm feeling about the fact that making this kind of change would have a significant impact on that. That's just an opinion of people who've been in this business for a while and have been dealing with processing these tardies. So I wouldn't want to give anybody the, the false hope that changing would, would make an improvement in that. I just want to say that, you know, making a time change may do a number of things, but it's not going to be all things to all people. Just, and, and in fact, as Diane mentioned, making, you know, two, you know, a list of pros and a list of cons, we might be surprised when we see both of those lists. I'm just saying, we haven't done that yet. We're still collecting information, but we're trying to do this in a deliberate way and cover all the bases and it's what we're working towards.
Deidre.
Yeah, I think the interesting thing about this issue is there's an incredibly practical dimension to it where all these scheduling issues and where the buses, you know, even like the money side of it. And then there's the real concern with health and the well-being of our students. And I think we're trying to kind of have bifocal vision where we're really taking very seriously and attending to both of those concerns. And, you know, the number of times I've heard people sit with us and really in very kind of serious ethical way say, on the one hand, this is going to be a total nightmare for me in terms of X, Y, and Z, but on the other, you know, I really want to engage seriously with the concern about, you know, supporting mental health of teenagers, making sure that they're actually learning to the best of their ability. So I have found it incredibly heartening, you know, the responses we've gotten from the people we're meeting with and speaking with are really, really thoughtful and, and constructive. And, and I hope all members of our community will continue this conversation in exactly that spirit because it does, you know, it challenges us in various ways.
Tom.
Two questions. First of all, I know we talked, if we did a single bus run, I am concerned because these schools are very close to each other, the traffic that will be in this area.
Right, right.
That will, and, and parents going from one school to the other, back and forth, and it will be very crowded. So that's something else to consider. My other question. My other question, and more importantly to myself, is when is the next meeting?
Oh, we didn't set a date.
It wasn't set in there, so I didn't see one.
We didn't set a date, sorry.
We didn't set a date, okay.
We, we shall.
Okay, that's fine. No, I'm working on it.
Yeah, because you're on the agenda.
You're the star of the next meeting. You tell us.
Let's talk after the meeting because.
Okay. Board of Education member nominating petition.
Okay, I, I bring this up because everybody around this table but one is aware of, of a concern that, that was raised last year. Yes, Mr. Walker, you were not privy to this conversation for, and that's exactly why we're having this conversation. We did have a discussion last year, most of you will recall, that as of the date that nominating petitions were due, we had two open seats and only one declared candidate for that position. So that's, I don't know about anybody else, but that's always a concern to me when we don't have declared candidates. And we discussed, you discussed as a board last year that it would be, it would be beneficial to be more proactive sooner in the process about outing the fact that we have X number of seats and this is the process and you can pick up petitions or access them on the website or whatever. So I'm raising the issue at this point in time. I, you know, I, I'm never one to not give credit where credit's due, but I happened to notice one morning not too long ago when I was surfing the web at, you know, four twenty AM looking to see what other schools were delayed or closed or whatever, I noticed a couple of our colleagues' schools, Pine Plains being one of them, already had their nominating stuff on their website. So I'm thinking, yeah, that's actually what made me think of this conversation at that ungodly hour. So Mary Ann has put together what's in your packet, which is kind of a draft packet of information. And I just wanted to take an opportunity in a public session with people watching on Panda and maybe, you know, getting things in the local papers that there are two seats that the public will be voting on at this year's annual meeting on May nineteenth, I think, I think. Don't quote me on that one. And that petitions are due on, by April twentieth. And I intend to have that up on our website, you know, shortly. It's just a matter of, I wanted to roll it out here first and then we'll, we'll upload it and make that available. So I just wanted people to know. That's all, the sooner they know, perhaps the sooner they would consider filing a petition. So we have at least two, if not more, declared candidates by April twentieth.
I don't know if this additional information regarding Board of Education service, I don't think I saw it when I.
I don't think we showed it to you because we wanted to get you to turn in your petition.
It's very helpful. It's very, very helpful.
I'm kidding about that.
It's, it's, I don't know, I don't feel like I, I saw it, but it's great. And, and I just want to encourage anyone who's thinking about this to, you know, to attend that workshop that I know we both did, that's held by BOSI's, where there's all kinds of very helpful information shared by currently serving board members in different school districts. And, and also that people should feel comfortable approaching any of us to ask us questions about our own experience on the board. I, I know that people were very generous in talking with me. We like to talk to people about what we do and it, we ask. If you're wondering what it's about, we hope that people who are watching are thinking about this past.
Yeah, I, I think we want people to have a realistic insight into what this involves. It's, it's very challenging, very rewarding work, and, you know, it's, it's, it's not for the, the faint of heart or the undedicated. I mean, it takes a special person to do the job that you do well, and the people on this board do their job well, in my opinion. And I've worked with lots of boards over, over a fairly lengthy career. On the other hand, it's not, it's not a drive-by, it's not drive-by community service. It's, it's, it's tough work and it's demanding and it takes a lot of time. So we want people who are dedicated and up to the task, and I think getting that information out and getting it out sooner rather than later will increase the likelihood that people who take out petitions and who, some of whom are eventually elected, are up to the task. So there, there's the challenge.
Lisa. I have a couple of comments on the documents themselves, and maybe you'd rather that I just.
We could probably do them another time.
Yeah, that's fine.
Or let Mary Ann know she, she put them together, so.
I'm happy to do that. But one thing I, I want to reiterate from the discussion last year, this is my hobby horse, so I'm going to ride it, is I want to encourage sitting board members who are, whose seats are going to be up and who are considering whether or not to run for reelection, to declare sooner rather than later whether they intend to run for reelection. Because one of the things that I perceived in last year's scenario was that there may have been members of the public who were considering running who held off because they preferred not to run against an incumbent and that, you know, ultimately held off longer than there was time to, to be had. And, and while there's no requirement that incumbents declare their candidacy at all, all they have to do is file a petition, I think that it would be a service to the community to give people as much notice as possible. I think that, you know, realistically, people who are considering the possibility of running for a seat, for an open seat would, you know, you want to, you want to give them roughly a month to, to do the things that are necessary to get the petition in because life has a way of, sort of, eating up your time. So if you, if any, any incumbents know before then, you know, the, by say the March twenty-fourth meeting, I think it would be, that they've made a decision one way or another, that would seem to be an opportune time to, to make a public comment. But again, you know, it's personal, people's personal choice, so.
So Joe, I think that if you, whatever you put on the website, you mentioned, you know, that there's this opportunity to go to a prospective board member workshop so people can know ahead of making a decision.
Right.
That's what's helpful about it. And, you know, I, well, I, I definitely, you know, last year was a complicated situation for me as well. I was kind of surprised by it, but the, the, and the outcome was ultimately fantastic. I think it's all benefited from it, it goes without saying, so that was fantastic. No, absolutely. But, but really it is people's personal choices too, so we really have to put that out there. I would not want to support that people have any pressure to say because there are all kinds of complicating factors that go into why any of us decide to run again. So, you know, I want to put out there that that's all just up to, to people.
All right, so my seat is one of the seats up for reelection. I'll just mention that I will be running.
He's declaring tonight.
When the packets are available, we can let you know.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right.
Very good.
Go back to my agenda. Good news.
I was going to say one, a couple. One really obvious thing is I think this is like maybe this yesterday might have been like the first Monday in a while that there's school.
Since January fifth.
That is good news.
Really? That long?
Oh, God.
That was it.
Are there good news?
Well, I, I would just mention that, that four of us met with Senator Serino yesterday afternoon, Mark and Deidra and, and Tom and I. And I thought it was, was a good meeting and good opportunity to share our perspective on a number of items, in particular, things like the, the current situation in Albany and state aid, and talked a little bit about the Common Core and how wonderful our school district is, and was, was, was a good meeting and is the first of three that we have scheduled. Just so the public is aware, we are, we are meeting again, well, we're meeting with DeeDee Barrett, Assemblywoman DeeDee Barrett, who represents part of our school district, and Assemblyman Kevin Cahill, who represents another part of our school district. Not coincidentally, on the same day, March fifth, I think. So if you haven't gotten back to Christine, my secretary, yet to let her know whether you're able to attend one or both, please do. And that will wrap up our annual planned tour of meeting with our local legislators. So I think it's good news that we've met with one and good news we, we have appointments with the other two. And thank you, those of you who are able to join us at one or more of these, these meetings.
Lisa.
Can you give us a little insight on what Senator Serino's responses to your comments were?
I could. Well, I mean, I'll, I'll speak frankly, and I think she's, she's in learning mode. She's newly elected or very recently elected, and I think she listened very, very actively and attentively. And, you know, again, in fairness to her, she doesn't have really, just on the state aid picture and the, the budget process, you know, she's, she's just dipping her toe in the water. So I wasn't anticipating any great insights or, yeah, I know when we go up there in two weeks, we'll have a budget, you know, and that would be foolish to, to think that. But I thought she was, you know, I enjoyed meeting with her. I think, I think it was a good opportunity to start to develop those relationships with our elected officials. And again, since she's new to the game, she doesn't have a track record, one, you know, for better or for worse, so, and I'm sure Mark or Deidre or Tom could share their perspective. It was, it was a good meeting.
I'll just mention that, she did mention that she was placed on the Senate Education Committee, so it was good for us to have a voice.
So that's quite useful, yes.
Yeah, thanks.
And you could learn from her website, and she reiterated that she does support repeal the gap elimination adjustment. And we shared with her our concerns about the governor holding the budget hostage to, to, to force the legislature to agree with, move forward on certain policy issues regarding education. And, you know, I think she very much heard and shares those concerns. One of the aides that was in the room with her has an extensive background in higher education, so understands some of the issues related to education and teacher evaluation and use of technology we talked about. And so I think that I was, it was, I was impressed at actually giving the newness to the position that she was, you know, comfortable and conversant with what our concerns were and had definitely heard from other constituents around education issues. So it was a good conversation. I want to say I think these meetings are really good for the back and forth because also what's happening is we're informing them of our issues, we hear back from them, open up the lines of communication for the future and, you know, so, you know, they're nice and conversational, but I think they're effective. I mean, to the extent that they can for our local legislators, whether the mess up there really is impacted.
Okay. Other good news? Deidra.
I just want to say one more time how incredible the Take a Stand gallery was, the bringing together of all the disciplines that kids are working in, in the middle school, the arts, learning about how to be effectively creatively communicating an idea through speaking, through presentation and creating that kind of public gallery space. Fantastic turnout for the community. It was a beautiful use of the space, wonderful way to bring artists in our community together with teachers, thinking about issues of how individuals can make a change when they encounter injustice. It was really quite moving. So I know we had the presentation, but it was really great to be there, and I know many of us were there to see it in person, but it was a great initiative. That was good news.
Yeah, one quick thing, CDEP met for the first time yesterday, which is one of our goals. So, and we're, we're working to schedule a follow-up meeting in March to really start digging through the old, old plans.
That's excellent news.
Positive, forward motion.
Okay, other good news? All right, move on to old business. Any items of old business?
Yeah, just, just one, I guess it could also come under other, but Deidre Dalbert reminded me today in an email that we should be setting our coffee with the board schedule back in the fall when, when I had this, this illusion that we might actually be able to calendar all four of them. We got the first two calendared and then it kind of bogged down understandably. At that time, the Communications Committee, I think, was looking at March eleventh or March twelfth. We were trying to put them about the halfway point of each quarter. And at that time anyway, those of you who responded, it was, it seemed like it was difficult for people to commit at that early time for one or the other. So I would put both of those dates on your calendar and ask you to let me know, certainly you don't have to shout it out now, but either later tonight or within the next day or so, I'll send a little reminder email so we can try to calendar that, assuming the board wants to continue with that, at least run it through the year and see how we make out. And it's important for us to have a critical mass at each of those meetings. It's kind of beside the point if there's only one board member and me there. So those are the two dates we're looking for, looking at. If those dates don't work, we'll look for something else, but right now, let's see where we, our schedules align with either of those at this point.
Mary Ann.
I remember why, oh, you said why we're looking at March. I'm just wondering if maybe we should think about April as we have more budget information, at least those might center more around budget, then maybe it makes more sense to push it when we have more.
We certainly can.
More towards the middle.
It's up to you.
This is probably a good idea.
I think so too.
Maybe, maybe.
I mean, when we originally set these dates up, we weren't even thinking about budget and where we might be and what a mess we would be dealing with in terms of Albany, so.
Yeah, later's better.
All right, so I'll, I'll look at, at school calendars and shoot a couple of dates out to you in, in, in early April. We'll have had our, hopefully, depending on what you agree to do later tonight, we'll have our budget workshop done, even if we push it later, and maybe some more information from Albany, maybe even a budget talk about a pipe dream. So I'll, I'll get something out to you on a rescheduled meeting for, for April. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Other old business? Okay. There's one more opportunity for public comment. Jet.
I wasn't going to make a comment on my dinner, but I have a, I can't think of how to comment, so I'm going to ask the question, and I know that you don't need to respond to ten to ten, I don't expect you to, but given the discussion of school start time and the budget issues, are there policies where people can opt out of taking the bus? So if a family whose kids never take the bus and never want to take the bus, is there a policy that would prohibit people from opting out? If there isn't, would there be some way of looking at if there's a critical mass of people who could potentially opt out, maybe even saving the bus? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like us to respond to that? Board, I'm asking the board.
Sure. Come up in our conversation.
Conversations, so, yeah.
Do you want to take a shot at it? You can't opt out.
You can opt out.
You cannot. A parent cannot opt out of it. But you are allowed to overload a bus. So if you have a 66-passenger bus.
Optimize.
You can say, I'm going to put 80 kids on the bus. Knowing that not all of them are going to ride. But I can't, you can't ask a parent to opt out. It's just, you can't be, you can't do that. But there's nothing to say. In fact, I've been considering this, is to overload a bus, knowing that, you know, you see a bus now that comes in, it's got 20 kids in it. Well, why don't I put 100 kids on the bus and maybe 40 kids are going to be on it? But the problem comes is the time. The time, the time is the thing. How long? Because we can do that. We can overload a bus, but it does become about the time. How long would you allow? Because you've still got to make all the stops. So though you're going to make stops and no one's going to get on, but it's definitely worth considering, and I would.
So our guiding principle has been that we don't want any bus run to be more than 40, 50 minutes? And that we're trying to keep talking about it and that?
And the conventional direction from the State Education Department until relatively recently has been that you have to have a seat for every child.
That's right.
That said, magically, a couple of years ago, we started hearing from those same folks at the State Education Department that you don't need a seat for every kid on the bus. And there's been no policy change at the state regarding that, just a change of opinion, I guess. So when Tom talks about overloading a bus, I'd want to qualify what you said and say that their suggestion, if you wish to, is to make an assessment of about how many kids would ride a bus X on a given day and use that as the basis for determining how you assign ridership to the buses, which is a little, overloading to me sounds you're actually jamming 80 kids on a 60-passenger bus. That's not what we're suggesting, nor is the State Education Department. I just want to be clear about that, especially for our friends from the United States.
Only the first 66 get to go home.
So we're looking at that. But it'd be a guesstimate, but it might be something that would help us. So that's up to Mr. Brunel at this point. We give him the easy jobs.
Yeah.
Other?
Oh, you know, I just wanted to, I think an email went out earlier today about the Duchess County School Board's association meeting is next Thursday evening, which would make a busy day for a lot of people, because there are those Cahill and Barrett meetings, and then it's Thursday. But our former board president is the new.
Executive Director.
Executive Director. So that could be a productive meeting. I'm not sure that I can make that meeting. I might be out of town that day, but if anyone wants to.
I may try. I'm not sure if I can do it or not. Any other other? Okay, so move on to action items. Is there anyone who would like to remove something from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the recommendation of David Airstock to conduct selection classification fitness testing for the 2014-15 spring sports season as necessary.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to adopt the provisions of Section 458(a) of the real property tax law, which would grant a partial exemption from taxation for school district purposes of certain real properties situated in the school district and owned and used as the primary residence by eligible veterans, alternative veterans exemption. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board, having conducted a public hearing on February 10, 2015, and having given the public an opportunity to be heard on the issue of the Board's proposed adoption of the alternative veterans exemption pursuant to Section 458(a) of the real property tax law, hereby adopts the alternative veterans exemption for assessment rolls prepared on the basis of taxable status date occurring on or after January 1, 2015, at the following basic maximum levels. One, basic exemption, tax exemption of 15% of the assessed value of the property not to exceed $12,000 or the product of $12,000 multiplied by the latest state equalization rate for the assessing unit, whichever is less. Two, combat zone, an additional tax exemption of 10% of the assessed value of qualifying residential property of veterans who are documented to have served in a combat zone not to exceed $8,000 or the product of $8,000 multiplied by the latest state equalization rate, whichever is less. Three, disabled veterans. In addition to the above exemptions, where the veteran receives a compensation rating for the Veterans Administration or Department of Defense based upon a service-related disability, the qualifying residential property will be exempt to the extent of the product of the assessed value multiplied by 50% of the veteran's disability rating, not to exceed $40,000 or the product of $40,000 multiplied by the latest state equalization rate, whichever is less. And be it further resolved that the Board directs the district clerk to provide a certified copy of this resolution to the Duchess County and the assessors for the other taxing jurisdictions located within this school district.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? Deirdre?
Yeah, so I just want to say that I really have struggled over this issue because I do object to tax-shifting policies. And I think it's just one of many policies that the state legislature and the government have, the governor have enacted that puts schools in kind of bind. So I do support having, giving veterans certain tax exemptions and benefits. That it's not supported by additional state monies or this isn't happening at the statewide level, puts a, does put, you know, where some people may not think it's very much money. And it isn't really per taxpayer who is going to have to be taxed additionally to make up for those exemptions. But, you know, there are many people in our community who are on fixed incomes, and the whole funding of schools through property taxes is so problematic, as we know, and we've talked about this, about that around this table for a long time, where you might have a senior citizen living in a home that they've lived in for 60 years, and even with a star exemption, you know, tax, the property taxes can be prohibitive. And so those people, then their taxes go up a little bit. And yet, of course, no one wants to, I mean, I think it's an honorable thing to provide an exemption for veterans. So I've struggled with it because it's not good, it's not really good, it's not good policy on behalf of the state. And we are put in a bad position again. The state for years has been pushing down state responsibilities for funding education, all kinds of other services to local municipalities to deal with it. That being said, I'm going to vote for it because I haven't heard much, except for last year, when we first took it up, anything from the community. And I think that our community would support this without any evidence otherwise. But I think it is then further incumbent upon us, the meetings with our legislatures become so much more important around the continuing ways that our communities are really struggling over education budgets and the various ways that we are just sort of like put in this position to constantly ask our taxpayers for money and find good education. And basically, I think overall, the problem for me is that I don't see at the state level a commitment to financing education appropriately. And so we are left with the sort of detritus of that. So I just needed to say that because I really think it's important that we continue to advocate for appropriate policies around education funding at the state level so that we're not continuously put in these difficult situations around relating to our taxpayers and providing good education and great and sound education for our students.
Any other comments? Good.
I think that's an excellent point, and I think we've all struggled with that. I'm going to vote for it also, having a similar struggle. I am the father of a veteran who doesn't live in the area, but I think that having been even the family of a veteran, you don't understand until it's happened what they've given, we heard, and what they've given from their lips last time, but it still reverberates far beyond that. And I am also a senior citizen on a fixed income. So I am going to be impacted directly by this, and I'm still going to vote for it.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Jill Simmons to commence honor about June 6, 2015, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave, and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through June 25, 2015.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Donna Van Voris as an additional 2014-15 CSE/CPSE parent member. See attached.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional spring coaches and advisors for the 2014-15 school year. Track, varsity, distance and hurdles, John Lombardo, $3,947. Softball, junior varsity, Scott Stiverston, $2,777.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the probationary appointment of Gideon Moore to the position of business social studies teacher assigned to the Buckley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School, effective February 17, 2015 through August 16, 2017. In consideration of the application of JERIMA credit in the tenure areas of social studies and business respectively, at a salary of Step III MA plus 30 plus 30, $66,753 prorated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2014-15. This is corrected from the February 10th agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? Lisa?
What was the correction?
There were multiple corrections there, but none of the, none of the, none of the important stuff in terms of salary or the length of time or any of that stuff changed. It was just wording that I wanted to be more consistent with the way we've done these things. And because I wasn't here, I'll throw myself under the bus. It didn't get done exactly the way I wanted it done, so it's not changing anything. I've already talked to this employee and told him that there's nothing for him to worry about. We're glad we hired him last time, and we're just correcting some of the language in there, that's all.
And is that the case for the next item?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a request from Shannon Denise for unpaid leave of absence effective March 21, 2015 through June 30, 2016, also corrected from the February 10th agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes.
Excuse me, on that one, I failed to indicate an unpaid leave of absence. And I think we also had something in there about Family Medical Leave Act, so just to protect the district, I wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
So.
I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those, Lisa?
No. Oh. She's eager to go.
All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes.
Sorry about that. She's eager to go.
I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the extension of the appointment of Bethany Vandemark as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School at the pleasure of the Board, effective March 21, 2015 through June 25, 2015, at the salary of Step I MA plus 6, $57,719 prorated per diem, in accordance with the 2014-15 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Shannon Denise, elementary teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the permanent civil service appointment of Beth Hedy as teacher aide effective March 2, 2015. Lucy Munger as teacher aide effective March 2, 2015. Kathleen Smith as teacher aide effective March 2, 2015. And Christine Belcher as secretary to the superintendent effective March 3, 2015.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint additional 2014-15 CLS before-school enrichment program instructors.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the RHS Principles of Engineering course to fulfill the requirements of a mathematics unit of credit for graduation effective the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion?
Question? So Joe, this specifically is for Principles of Engineering. What about Principles of Design?
That doesn't have to be approved by the Board because the State Education Department has already indicated that that course will fulfill that requirement. So it's just unnecessary to do.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes.
I would like, given our discussion earlier today, I would like to make a recommendation that the Board of Education modify the 2015-16 budget calendar to reschedule the budget workshop for Saturday, March 21 at 9:00 a.m., and to schedule a special meeting on April 21 for the purposes of voting on the BOSI's budget and board members, as well as adopting the budget on that date.
So you need a motion for that?
Yes.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion or questions?
So I just wanted to clarify, because it's, so it's to reschedule the budget workshop from March 7 to March 21.
Correct.
And to hold the Board of Ed final adoption of the budget on April 21.
At a special meeting on April 21.
Would you say the week is?
It's a Tuesday.
It's the BOSI's board vote.
It's a BOSI's board vote, that's correct. But we would be adopting our budget to go to the taxpayers on the 21st.
And you'll, you'll circulate a revised calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And Joe, so that will give your office plenty of time to circulate all the appropriate notices to the community.
Yeah, we'll email and do a notice and, yeah, put on our calendar.
The calendar, the budget newsletter has to get out to the community by...
Yeah, I mean, it tightens that up, but only by one week. Because we were scheduled to adopt it on April 14, so we'll be okay.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.
Thank you.
I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of a student disciplinary matter.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We'll move into executive session.